This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. The Eau Claire City Council Meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council Meeting.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jean.
And welcome all to City Council this evening. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Welcome everyone to this legislative meeting, August 28th, of the Eau Claire City Council. We welcome folks here this evening and want to let people know at home that if they would like to catch this livestreamed, they can go to ValleyMediaWorks.org. And so hopefully, if you're not able to make it tonight, you can tune into that. We'll get started right away then. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. As a note, I just want to let folks know that if their item is on the consent agenda, that they should know that we pass all of these together as one bundle, as one group. And so, just a note to folks that are watching or here today regarding that. Do councilmembers at this time have any questions about the consent agenda, or wish to remove any item? Councilmember Emanuel?
I'm sorry, I just had my hands folded to myself. I apologize.
Sorry. My apologies. Seeing no such desire to remove an item from the consent agenda to take up separately, Clerk, please call the roll. So, a motion by Councilmember Strobel, and seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Do councilmembers have questions, thoughts, concerns about the consent agenda? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes. We do not have a proclamation this evening, so we will move to our business agenda, which is item number 16, a donation, and this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the donation of a solar-powered charging station from Exile Energy. And Mr. Solberg is here with details this evening. Welcome.
This resolution enacts the city manager to accept up to four solar charging stations as proposed by Exile Energy. The solar charging station that would be donated is this model that is right here at the bottom of the screen. Exile Energy did contact the City of Eau Claire, and in a spirit of cooperation and excitement surrounding the downtown area, with Haymarket Plaza coming online later this year, and the other developments, the Riverwalk and Graham Avenue, wished to make this donation to help further the redevelopment of downtown, the use of downtown, and also further enhance the use of sustainable energy. So, the donation is of four of these devices, and the intent is to have them placed in and around the downtown area, whether it be Haymarket Plaza, Graham Avenue area, Phoenix Park, Farmers Market, but to help support the charging of solar, or the solar charging of handheld electronic devices in that area. If there'll take any questions.
Do councilmembers have questions for Mr. Solberg regarding the charging stations? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Mr. Solberg, thank you for helping to make this happen here and presenting it to us. I was wondering about the cost to install and also to maintain these stations, and then if you have an estimate of the value of the donation that we're receiving, that would also be...
I don't have an estimate of the value. I would say they're probably a few thousand dollars each for those. As far as the install, we would work, we have two electricians for the city, and we would have our electricians install these, so there wouldn't be no added, you know, outside cost other than the cost of our electrician that we have. Being solar-supported, we don't have to run conduits or any kind of electrical fixtures to them. We take them, they bolt onto a hardscape area, or if the ultimate choice, best choice is in a grassy area, we would have to pour a sonotube or some kind of a base for it. But we're planning to do the install with our current city forces.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members have any questions from Mr. Solberg? Seeing none, thank you. Thanks for your work on this. Then, on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, and seconded by Councilmember Weld, item number 16 is moved. Is there a discussion? Councilmember, sorry, do I see a discussion at this time? Councilmember Anderson?
I just am really pleased to see this donation. One of the things that's not listed on the brochure is, I see this as possibly really useful for residents who are experiencing homelessness, as having access to a charge mobile device is really important in seeking employment or seeking a new apartment.
Other thoughts, comments? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, and that item passes. Next up on our agenda, business agenda, is a resolution approving the final plat for Southside Lofts, located on the south side of Arthur Street, east of Boardwalk Street, and north of Boardwalk Circle. This is item number 17. Mr. Allen is here with the details.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and members of the council. To help orient ourselves a little bit here, just want to provide an overview map that we've started to provide to the Plan Commission in their agenda packet. So, the agenda items here are referenced to their agenda, so for this item, point out is item eight. So, again, just to try to show in reference overall in the city where this is generally located. With that, real briefly, again, this is a final plat for 18 multifamily residential lots and one outlot on 8.77 acres. The applicant is proposing approximately 76 units as a part of this plat. There's some additional agenda items before you related to this here tonight. This is currently New York Avenue, it's an unimproved extension off of Boardwalk. And again, the extension here would be looking to be named Cassie Court. And again, here is the overall subdivision itself. There's a proposed to be mixture of some duplexes, as well as fourplexes throughout. This is R3 zoning, and is surrounded as well by similar construction. The final site plans of the apartment buildings, or fourplexes and such, will need to be reviewed by the Plan Commission prior to construction. And again, there's a development agreement before you as the next agenda item as well. And happy to stand for any questions.
Sure. Are there questions from councilmembers regarding this item? Councilmember Anderson?
A couple of questions. The first is, do you have any sense of the affordability of the proposed construction, or is that not to be determined yet?
That has not yet been determined. Very good question. It's something we'll certainly inquire of when they submit for the final plans, site plan for Plan Commission.
Thank you. And may I have a follow-up?
Sure.
It's actually kind of unrelated. This is just a curiosity question. I noticed there's a new street named Cassie Court, and I'm just curious how that name was come up with. I think something that I and other people have wondered is, you know, how are street names chosen, so...
That's an excellent question. I too am wondering how street names are chosen in that regard. In this case, I'm not sure specifically to Cassie Court, but yeah, there are some, as you recall, perhaps the Board Game Monopoly-related street names currently, with Boardwalk and New York Avenue. But again, this small portion here is unimproved, so it's not something that is necessarily required to continue. But again, that's also an item before you as well, is to rename that unimproved portion to be consistent with Cassie Court. And then, Justin Lane as well. I can only imagine those are the first names of someone's children, so that would be my guess.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Generally speaking, the developer will propose the street names. We will, we do a staff review to make sure that the name is not duplicated, you know, some of the place within the city. There's also some issues consistent, you know, whether it is a lane, or a place, or a street. But generally, the recommendation comes in from the developer on the initial plats, but it is subject to a staff review to make sure that it's not consistent with, you know, some of the practices that we have in the city.
Thanks.
Thank you. I don't think your light's working right now. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there further questions from council regarding this? I guess I have one as well. I just was looking at the layout of this area and wondering about the cul-de-sac and how it ends there, and if there was consideration or discussion around the possibility of that road actually connecting through to the east. Is that a possibility, and was that discussed?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Regarding that in particular, I apologize, I do not have a good answer for that. I may defer to Deputy City Engineer, Mr. Jensko, to help with that. There may be some topography related to that, that's typically what occurs in these situations. And again, it is some infill as well, trying to fit into the existing area in particular. But I'll defer to him if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
If you'd said to parker before I got up, I would have said yes. That is really the answer. There's a hillside there that makes it impractical to put that road to go through.
Thank you. Are there further questions from council on this final plat? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Just looking at this again, and maybe why the question came up as the renaming of the street Cassie Court, it appears that it butts directly into York Avenue from the map. So, why would you not just continue York Avenue into the development?
That was our recommendation to them, but as the city manager said earlier, we allow the developers to pick the names for the developments, and then it goes through a review. It actually goes through the comm center, and through police and fire, and the post office to get street name approvals. And in this case, on your consent agenda, is a street name change to change New York Avenue to Cassie. And the reason for that is the timing got bumped up a little bit, so the request came in. So, normally, we try to have them be on the same council meeting that you're voting, but in this case, it's the consent agenda item, starting the ordinance revision for the first reading, or, I'm sorry, I might have, it might be the first reading of that agenda, of that ordinance, to change New York to Cassie Avenue. So, there's a name change being proposed.
Okay, so then, a follow-up to that. If we approve this, and we have a, maybe an issue with the name change, the following week, how does that affect everything?
And let me clarify, it was an ordinance for introduction, so it's item 23 on your agenda today. And so now, your question is, if you don't want to change it from New York to Cassie, what happens with that? Well, you would have to defeat the ordinance when it comes through. I think it's, I'm not sure what the answer is, for what happens to this plat if you want Cassie to be New York Avenue.
City Attorney?
Right, I would agree that the name change, so changing street names is a council prerogative, it's an ordinance change, and if you'd rather not change the name, don't change, you know, don't adopt the ordinance, or make it clear that this new one would continue with the existing street name. So, I think it's something that'll be in front of you in the next, the next agenda, yeah, in two weeks. I think you can take action on the plat, and if need be, we can make that administrative change on the face of the plat before we sign it.
If I may, Acting President Worthman and Councilmember Strobel, again, that portion of New York Avenue is unimproved currently, so that's part of the rationale that, you know, staff is agreeable to recommending the name change, simply because it's not changing an existing street that has structures on it, or is currently approved.
Does that help? City Attorney Nick?
Yeah, just one more thought. I mean, if there is a strong desire now to do it, because really what you've got in two weeks is a name change of the existing street to Cassie, so you have consistency. Because, right, you don't want mid-block name changes, that's no good. So, if you're concerned, and you'd rather keep it all as New York, you could amend the final plats that's in front of you to make it clear that, you know, that cul-de-sac extension is not going to be Cassie Court, it's going to be called New York. But otherwise, if, I think, if you just vote it down next week, we'll take it as the same direction.
Okay. Follow-up question, Councilmember Strobel?
Yes, and in looking at it, if New York Avenue is non-improved right now, it totally makes sense to change the whole thing to Cassie Court for me, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from Mr. Allen? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Then, on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this final plat has been moved. Sorry. We already, are we on item number 17?
Yeah, we didn't have a motion yet.
Okay, then that's, then that's the motion. Are there questions, concerns, thoughts, amendments being considered by council on this item? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move then to our item number 18 on the business agenda, which is resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into development agreement for this same development, which is Southside Lofts LLC, for street and utility improvements within and serving the plat of the Southside Lofts. Mr. Jensko?
Okay, this is the development agreement for the plat that was just approved. The portion within the plat is the outlot for stormwater facilities, and then the streets you see here, the portion serving the plat is to construct the portion of what's currently New York Avenue, to bring the street and infrastructure into the plat. There are structures on both sides of that that exist, they are addressed to Boardwalk, and they do take their utility services from Boardwalk and their driveways as well. It's a fairly routine development agreement, it's, there's a few different items on it. It has, it has conditions for financing, there's a letter of credit for $477,320. And then, it has a petition and waiver for the financial guarantee for the portion along Arthur Street. And the reason for that is, there are already structures constructed along Arthur Street. Arthur Street's already in with the temporary asphalt surface, there's utilities serving through there, but nothing was stubbed to serve these lots, because at that time, we didn't know what was going to happen. I believe this is a vacant lot right here. So, the development agreement and the building permits that will ensue will include extending services into these four parcels. And then, once those services are in, then the city as part of our citywide street program then would come and do the permanent part of Arthur Street on our schedule based on the condition of Arthur Street. We would fit it into our program. And so, the petition and waiver is essentially saying the developer, the owner of record, is saying we waive our right to a public hearing, we waive our right to contest the assessments, we'll pay the assessments when they come. So, that's what that is for. There's the right-of-way dedication within the plat, the dedication of the outlot, the timing of Arthur Street, and then construction inspection and review fees. The way our ordinances work, sidewalk constructed per city ordinances would involve frontage on all the lots within the plat. We're also calling for construction adjacent to the two lots of bringing the street in, just so that there won't be a hole there. Part of this sidewalk already exists, but because of the age of these buildings, and because it was an unimproved right-of-way, we're asking this developer to build those sidewalks at this, at this time, as part of this development agreement. Now, the developer has requested a deferral of sidewalks, and for the council to defer sidewalks, they have to request it in writing, and you'll see that on page, I believe it's 83 of your council packet, and that would be to defer the sidewalk on the cul-de-sac. If the council chooses to do that, the page after that, page 84, has recommended language to do that, and if you choose to move that amendment, this is where the sidewalks would go, it'd be everywhere I just described, except for on the cul-de-sac bubble. To do that, you would have to find that that sidewalk cannot be built for topographical reasons, or you don't see it in the long-term interest of meeting the needs of the city. And in a case like this, staff would not recommend that deferral. But it was requested, so it's in your packet.
Thank you. The council questions, Councilmember Beaton?
We do get requests for deferral on roundabouts quite a lot, I've noticed, and I'm wondering if there is, I guess, in the greater scheme of dead ends here, if there's a practical or a safety reason not to include sidewalks? And I guess, even more specifically, I'm wondering why for this one, staff is recommending not to defer, whereas other situations like this, we have chosen to defer.
Well, I think recently, the only one that I can recall that staff has supported was up in Camden Place, the development up off Jeffers Road that had the connection through the park to Sherwood Heights. And the reason we recommended deferral there was the nature of the housing, and the width of the driveway approaches, and the number of driveway approaches on that cul-de-sac made it very difficult for where snow would be stored, and it's essentially a paved driveway approach anywhere else. On the other cul-de-sacs, I believe the developer has requested it, staff hasn't necessarily supported it. In fact, I don't think we supported it, but I don't think we've been asked the question either. This is the first time we've actually made it clear in the council packet that we're not supporting it. The reason the developers request it, most developers don't want to put it in around a sidewalk, the way our ordinances are written for street construction projects, there are some situations where the council can defer sidewalk on construction projects, but it was specifically wrote, written for new development, that those situations don't apply. And so, developers are still used to the old way, and still asking for that request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Jensko, thank you. Then, on a motion by Councilmember Bergy, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this development agreement has been moved. Are there thoughts, comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Acting President, just a point of information. So, if we are to approve the, this resolution to have the city manager enter into a development agreement, if we don't amend the resolution, then that's saying no to the sidewalk deferral. Like, so, things will go, the sidewalk will be required unless we amend the resolution. Okay, thank you.
I believe that's true. Other points of clarification, thoughts, comments? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll. I'm going for it.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move then to item number 18, sorry, 19, which is regarding Forest Glen Estates. This is a resolution approving the final plat for Forest Glen Estates, located on the north side of Westover Road, west of State Street. Mr. Allen is here with the presentation.
Thank you again, Acting President Worthman and councilmembers. Here before you this afternoon is a request to approve final plat for Forest Glen Estates, which is 3.6 acre parcel proposing 13 lots. And on the map here, it is item number seven. Just for reference sake, a picture of Ariel here, which shows that the property is quite a bit bounded by township property, so it's essentially on the edge of city limits along west side of State Street, north side of Westover Road. It shows here, it's listed as Westover Woods, that was the original plat name. Again, it's coming forward before you as Forest Glen Estates. There are, again, there are 13 lots. 11 of the lots will be accessed off of the proposed cul-de-sac, and then two would be accessed off of State Street. And this is a property that remains outside state limits, and same to the north. There is existing residential to the west. Again, this proposed final plat does meet the conditions and standards of the preliminary plat, and was at the Plan Commission last week, and was recommended for your approval here this evening. Stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions on this Forest Glen Estates plat from council? I guess I have one. So, as I understand it, density has changed on this, and the last time that we saw this, there was quite a lot of, I would say, neighbor input about this. Did that happen this time, or did folks seem like this was a good rewrite?
A good question, thank you, Acting President Worthman. Again, yes, there was really little-to-no comment or response from the neighbors at this, this revision. All the lots do meet the minimum 8,000 square foot lot size, and some of them are quite a bit larger than that, as you can see in some of those there, so...
And then, and just so I can double-check, this, they were noticed all a second time when this went through, so neighbors were...
The, if I may, yeah, final plats are not, do not go through a public hearing notification process, but again, it was notification just in, in the more public meeting sense, so not direct mailings to the immediate surrounding neighborhood, per se.
Okay, because they would have had that notice when this originally came forward?
That was prior to my time here, so I'll, I may play that card, but in terms of any kind of zoning and such, there would have been some notification at that point. But again, through, for final plats, there isn't that, the public hearing notification process in this case.
Thank you. Are there other questions from council regarding this development? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Then on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, item number 19, which is a resolution approving the final plat for Forest Glen Estates, has been moved. Is there any comment, questions, seeing none at this time? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
And that item passes. We're on then to item number 20, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Creekside Homes LLC for street and utility improvements within the final plat of Forest Glen Estates. Mr. Jenska?
Well, this is the development agreement for the plat you just approved, a little more straightforward than the one previous to this. It has special conditions for financing, in this case, it's a letter of credit for $208,345. So I might add, between these two development agreements, you're approving three-quarters of a million dollars of infrastructure improvements paid for by developers in the community. Construction inspection and review fees, basically a cul-de-sac with the utility easements to get utilities out to State Street for further extension to the north. The two stormwater easements are for water quality facilities for the runoff off of this plat. There's a regional stormwater facility just to the west, down Westover Road, that meets the peak rate runoff control requirements for this plat, and the infrastructure was sized to get up this far, to take the runoff to that regional stormwater facility. Again, the developer has requested sidewalk deferrals, their letter can be found on page 111. Oh, this is where sidewalks would be required by our ordinance, all the way around the cul-de-sac and the frontage on State Street. In this particular case, the deferral request is just for the portion on State Street. They have not requested deferral on the cul-de-sacs, which gets at your question a little bit earlier. Staff does support this one. The reason for that is, this is a picture at the south end of those lots, looking at the cross-section there, and you can see that the topography falls off from State Street, and there's a certain amount of drainage that comes down along that way. So if sidewalks were to be constructed, that would have to be built up, and that would block off that drainage and create problems for the parcels upstream of this that are in the town. So what'll end up happening is these two parcels will have driveways similar to the other parcels along State Street, and possibly a culvert going under the driveways to do that. Now, we will want to be sure that as they do their driveways, that they are set up such that in the future, when State Street gets reconstructed with curb and gutter and the sidewalks at that time, then it'll be ready to do that without having to regrade their driveways. I'll point out that State Street is a state highway, I'm sorry, a county highway, and the rest of the parcels adjacent to it are all out in the township, and none of them have sidewalks, and unlikely to until annexed, and then there's a broader movement within the city to put sidewalks there. So in this case, staff is supporting, again, on page 112 of your packet, there is a proposed amendment if you choose to do that, and then if you choose to move and adopt that amendment, then the sidewalk on State Street would be deferred, but not the sidewalk on the street itself.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Jenska. On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, this item number 20 has been moved. Does anyone want to make the motion for, to amend? Councilmember Strobel?
I will move that we defer sidewalks along State Street as requested in the packet.
Seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, is there any discussion on that amendment? Council, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll on an amendment regarding sidewalk deferral on this development agreement.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. We take up the main item, which is a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into development agreement with Creekside Homes LLC. Are there further comments, questions, motions that anyone would like to make at this time? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move then to our ordinances for action. Our first one is item number 21, regards zoning. It's an ordinance rezoning property located at 3145 North Hastings Way, from R1 and R3 to R2. Mr. Allen is here this evening to answer any questions on this, and I believe, do you have a presentation?
No, other than to say, Acting President Worthman, that because this item was related to a public hearing last night, which was subsequently canceled, staff would recommend a postponement for both that item and this item to the September 10th and September 11th meetings.
Just for clarification, you said the annexation as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, this is simply related to the rezoning.
Oh, okay.
There's the, just for item 21.
Okay.
And I'll defer to Mr. Nick in terms of perhaps how that would need to be, I guess, identified or, or motioned, but it would be continuation, it would postponement of this item to September 11th, related to the public hearing last night. I don't know if that'd be a separate motion, or if they could just simply motion this item.
City Attorney?
Right, one motion, I would recommend postponement, just with a notation that we would re-notice and hold a hearing on your Monday, September 10th meeting with legislative action to follow on the 11th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I'm moved.
On a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, do we have a second? Councilmember Bergy, item number 21 has been moved to our next legislative meeting and to have a hearing as well on the Monday beforehand. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And item number 21 has been postponed.
We move then to item number 22, which is an annexation. It's an ordinance in accordance with Section 66.0217 Wisconsin statutes, annexing to the city of Eau Claire, and particularly the 11th Assessment Ward, 1st Aldermanic District, being a part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 11279 Town of Union, Eau Claire County, as shown in the planning drawing number 182A, which is also known as the Mogenson Petition. This is going to take a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body. And Mr. Allen is here to discuss the details of this annexation.
All right. Thank you, Acting President Worthman and councilmembers. This is a small annexation, as you can see by the map there, it's 0.4 acres. Proposed land used to be commercial or multifamily, but the surrounding existing land use is a mix of commercial immediately adjacent to it, as well as some multifamily to the, to the east on Keene Road. And again, this is right across from the overall Menards complex at Highway 12 slash 312. And again, it's a 0.4 acres, it brings in some right-of-way as well, to be adjacent to this overall property owned by the same property owner that's presenting this item tonight.
Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Allen, this evening? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember McGregor, item number 22, the annexation has been moved. Do we have discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on annexation. Again, item number 22 on our agenda.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move then to our ordinances for introduction. Item number 23, it's a street name change, as we had referenced earlier, ordinance changing the name of New York Avenue to Cassie Court, from Boardwalk Street to East End approximately 212 feet. Is there any desire at this time to take up this ordinance, to suspend the rules and take up this ordinance? Seeing none. We will then move to our announcements. City Manager Peters?
Acting President Worthman, I have no announcements tonight, other than to just remind you that we have a work session on the city council code of ethics and conduct in the meeting rooms just outside of this room following adjournment.
Thank you. And are there any announcements by council? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I just wanted to make an announcement about the 2719 steam locomotive. Our little work group of Councilmember McGregor, City Manager Peters, myself, and Visiter Eau Claire, has put out a news release about a public forum to be held on Wednesday, September 5th, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the RCU Community Room. And what we're looking for there is, we're looking to have community outreach, we're seeking input from the community on potential locations to house the engine, also looking at fundraising, any community support we can get, and we're really, really looking to gauge the, the support of the community on this. So Wednesday, September 5th, 6:30 to 8:00 at RCU, tell your friends, and we'll see you there.
Wednesday, September 5th. Thank you. Are there further announcements from city council? Councilmember Weld?
Acting President, just a big thank you to staff, to Mr. Solberg, to everyone that was a part of getting Harding Hill done in timely fashion before school started, and we all appreciate that, and I know the neighborhood does too.
It's, it's, thank you for that, Councilmember Weld, and it's good to see some of these street projects are already wrapping up. I'm sure people are appreciating that, so thank you for all the hard work to the staff and everyone who does that. Then, seeing no further business, no further announcements, on a motion by Councilmember McGregor, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this meeting has been adjourned without any opposition.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.